All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for your patience. Called meeting to on to order. If you kindly join me in exciting the slide with a little bit.
What is the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal in itself, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin by reviewing the draft minutes of our previous meeting. I would make a motion to approve the draft minutes. Remember, second, thank you, John. All in favor? Approved without amendment. We'll review the agenda as opposed to the town website. We'll begin with, we have two public hearings tonight for area variances. Our first one is 554 Roser Road, Mr. Grant Frasey. The second is 575 Pinewood's Avenue, Cary Montgomery. We had a use variance with Atlas Renewables, call it that. Two new business items. Forty-two Husted Avenue, Denise Green. Followed by Eric Green from BBL. And 112 Manchester Ave. So what we'll do is we'll begin the first item of this is on the agenda, which is to open a public hearing on the application of Mr. Frasey. Just ask you to come up first to the podium. And just to tell us if there have been any changes to the application since you last met in July. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll ask you to sit back down. We'll begin the public hearing and then proceed. So the zoning board will open the public hearing on this application. Going to ask the attorney to read the public hearing posting noting that it was published in the Eastwood Press, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to all owners of adjacent property within three hundred feet. So Bill Chris, you can come through honors, please.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of the fields of the town of Brunswick at 6:00 PM on Monday, August 15, 2022, at the Brunswick Town Hall, 336 Town Office Road, Brunswick, New York, 12180. Concerning the application submitted by Edward Frasey for an area variance in connection with the construction of a 16-foot by 20-foot shed on property located at 554 Brunswick Road. Copies of the application are available at Brunswick Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much. And just to note, it was brought back from the building department that this is a non-dead roadway and that the property line goes to the edge of the road. And that the proposed setback is 12 feet with a 13-foot encouragement. Just to clarify now. So we'll open it to the public. If there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this application, they're welcome to do so. And Chuck, were there any written?
There were no written or email comments.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the zoning board members?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So hearing, no public comment. I would make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this application with a number of seconds. So thank you, Tricia, all in favor? So the public hearing section is closed. The zoning board members are prepared to deliberate and act upon the application. And to do that, we're going to determine that this is a type 2 action under the SEAKER, that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So no further SEAKER determination is required. We're asked to explain how no undesirable change will be produced in the character of a neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties created by granting the requested area variance. Just start by saying that all neighboring properties have sheds similar to what's being proposed. There would be no undesirable change to the neighborhood. And we're asked to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance.
I think because of the way that his lot is laid out and where the existing garage is, he's parking, there isn't another spot for.
I agree, still the only feasible location. We're asked to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. Again, as a 13-foot encouragement. You kind of, you don't know what you said, Patricia, that it's a kind of a unique property in the sense that it has three setbacks, the front side and the back. So the value looks substantial on paper, however, in practicality, it's not. And we're asked to explain how the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on fiscal or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
Designing the shed to look like the current structure there, there won't be any change in the application, but you were.
I agree. Now, we're asked to explain whether the difficulty is self-created. Noting, of course, that consideration is relevant, but shall not necessarily include the grant on the area variance. Of course, it's self-created and the applicant wants the shed product, however, the use of the property. I think the law says that. I think there's no order for deliberation. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. And I'll just note for the record that the Rensselaer County Economic Planning had weighed in and said that local consideration shall prevail. So we'll consider the balance between benefit to the applicant as weighed against any detriment to the community at large or the neighborhood in particular. So you determine whether to grant through the area variance. I make a motion that we grant the area variance.
I'll say it again.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
So Mr. Frasey, your area variance is granted. So if you want to continue the fine work that you're doing with the building department going forward with the shed. You're welcome to fly for the project.
It's too fast. We have to wait three minutes, so it's too fast.
Oh, okay, there you go. Spike, let it start.
We expected to get the okay from the county in the mail, but it couldn't show up, so I might get it run down and get them. They're scanning, I wish you just broke up this. Yeah, this, if you can't scan it, you can't email it, right? You know? Maybe a fax might work, but you think about that. We have a virtual fax now. Where all the fax is going to Tracy, and Tracy provides them up.
And if you try to take a picture, you need each file.
True. I didn't think so.
They probably got it in the wind pusher they're moving to.
I tried to get on the town website, did I?
Yes, I understand that there's some issues with the town website. We've notified the IT folks.
Authentication.
Yeah, it says that.
I should have called to mail.
Well, I cloud ride through and got on it, you know?
Well, I didn't want, I didn't know if it was really the site or if something was happening.
No, it's the site. We've had other complaints about it as well.
Usually I don't have it.
I don't know whether he was hacking or what it was, but we've got, it got on that on it, so we'll see what happens. He's waiting.
Ami, ami. Well, you have to come.
He's left to come, he's looking to come?
Yeah. Ami, ami.
Ami. I'm going to black. He was here. Probably got him in my phone. UCIT guy, I better have him in my phone. We had one when I was at GE. And this first thing on the call, you were always in the pen, out in the field. And the first thing he would say is, is it plugged in? And the first, next thing he'd ask was, is it turned on?
Covering his face is there. All right, you're good to go. All right, your second item is also a public hearing. It's for Cary Montgomery at 575 Pinewood's Avenue. To ask the applicants to come on up. But does it ask you if there have been any changes to the application since you left here? You represented this last year in July.
Really?
No, all right, thank you. So similar to what just happened with the first public hearing, we'll pretty much run like that. So zoning board will open the public hearing on this application. Again, the notice that it was published in the Eastwood Press, was placed on the town signboard, was posted on the town website, and notice was mailed to all owners of adjacent property within 300 feet of the project site. So Tricia, can you give the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of the fields of the town of Brunswick at 6:15 PM on Monday, August 15, 2022, at the Brunswick Town Hall, 336 Town Office Road, Brunswick, New York, 12180. Concerning the application submitted by Cary Montgomery for an area variance in connection with an accessory structure posed to be located closer to the block line than a primary structure on property located at 575 Pinewood's Ave. Copies of the application are available at Brunswick Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing.
Thank you very much. So now's the time to do what's come and speak for or against this application. And Chuck, I'll ask you if there have been any written comments.
We've had no letters or emails. We did have one visit from a neighbor into the office, and she approved of it.
Are there any questions? Will we present them? No. So Cary, no public comment. I make a motion to close the public hearing with a number of seconds. Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Our number of seconds closed. The zoning board members are now prepared to deliberate and act upon this application. And we'll note that this, too, is a residential application, so falls under the type 2 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so no further environmental, oh, sorry, no further SEAKER determination is required. And we'll note that Rensselaer County Borough Economic Development and Planning has weighed in and stated that there would be no impact on county plans and that local consideration shall prevail. And I guess just to clarify that the height of the shed was of 14 feet. That was outstanding.
That was, that was a question that was asked in the last meeting.
Thanks, John. So the zoning board was asked to explain how no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties created by granting the requested area variance. I would say kind of similar to the first application that sheds are a part of the characteristic of this Pinewood's neighborhood as they're located near the primary structures. So there will be no undesirable change nor detriment. And we're asked to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variance.
I think it's due to the way that the house is situated on the property. And the sub existence in the back house, so I think that that's the best spot for the proposal to pull.
Yeah, we agreed to that, and then the convenient location of the existing driveway. Have that shed through the driveway. And then we're asked to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. Yeah, I would agree, given the setback from the road and other neighbors. And then zoning board is asked to explain how the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on fiscal or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
Given its location up behind another property, visibility very low.
We're asked to explain whether the difficulty is self-created.
It's self-created because it's really the only location on the property that they could easily equip it, structure.
I would note that that does, that this is not in and of itself created more to bring to the area variance. There's no order for deliberation. The board will consider the balance between benefit to the applicant as weighed against any detriment to the community at large or the neighborhood in particular and to currently grant the requested area variance. I make a motion that we grant the area variance. With a number of seconds.
One second.
Thanks, John. All in favor? Aye, thank you. So the area variance, which is the accessory structure in front of primary structure, is being granted. So Cary, just continue the work that you're doing with our hard-working building department. Thank you, man, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Love with your cud, John.
Now that suggests going up any ladder to those structures.
From my door, yes. Next, under a business, is Atlas Renewables requesting an area variance. So the zoning board is receipt of the information that you gave us, called residuals. Is this presentation to piggyback on that or to supplement what's?
This is some information about the last meeting that the board requests specifically for some spots to produce this visual assessment. We wanted to go further to the board request and we tried to produce, we tried to produce a comprehensive plan, not only the spots that we were requested, but also the spots. My initial comment is that is there any question for the board in regards to the technical and legal documentation that we have been providing up until now? So far, no comments?
Well, I'll address that, since you included.
We'll have to back out, you can say.
Since you included legal. I'll just note for the record that we certainly had the opportunity for the zoning board to meet in private session before the meeting tonight to review legal issues associated with the review standard. This was a private session, so council could provide discussion of legal issues with the board. That review continues based on that session. We'll note, we have, I have had the opportunity to review the supplemental on the review standard that continues to undergo review. We'll note that there is, it continues to be, based on my research, maybe it was to write it in supplement, if he knows otherwise, no reported cases dealing with the application of a review standard for use variance with respect to a solar facility. So that's the state of the law currently. And we're continuing to review the supplemental. The board should be in a position to make a determination applicable to the review standard at the next meeting.
Sure. Beginning, everyone, getting running. I would agree with Mr. Bill Chris's assessment that there is nothing published at this point on solar as compared to wind projects. And so look forward to taking it up at the September meeting with the board and discussing that further. And I guess that kind of would be the segue into all of Lewis is going to go through the technical details where the board is with respect to scheduling a public hearing. It will be holding off on that.
It would certainly be my advice to the board that we do consider holding off on that because obviously the review standard is directly relevant to that. Relevant to the issue of completing so directly.
Okay.
Terminating, if the ultimate determination is a different standard of review for use variance is applicable, then it could be different proof that the applicant may want this event. Determination's not been made yet, so I think it's premature for scheduling a public hearing.
Sure, I can understand and appreciate that position. Probably would be taken at a different one, five percent. So I appreciate that, and I think that makes some sense as far as if nothing else about expending efforts and breaking people.
Agreed.
At this point, so I appreciate the insight into that, and we'll turn it back over to Lewis then.
Thank you. Thank you. In this visual assessment, we have prepared different aerial views, ground-level views, and off-lift, simulated conditions. This is likely summarizing all our floors and is summarizing which streets we have been reviewing. This report, it's clockwise, starting from Sugar Hills and the Glen Sugar Hills, and moving through Newbury, Manchester Avenue, Groove Creek Road, Heather's Ridge, and finally, East Road. So you will see in the report the aerial pictures and the ground-level pictures from initially from Sugar Hills, then U3, and clockwise the rest of the streets. This is likely summarizing first, which is the boundary of the property. This is Sico Way Solar Farm. In red color is the boundary of the parcel, and in blue color, the approximately fencing area. So despite this parcel is larger, the fencing area would be smaller. Similarly, this Groove Creek Solar Farm, which will be approximately 24 acres, the red perimeter, and approximately 14, 15 acres, the blue perimeter. Each of these spots in blue color represents ground level, in yellow color represents aerial level. And of course, the arrow is pointing to the direction where that picture was taken. We don't have intention to hold the slide as planned, except for requests, so but we would like to mention a couple of the slides to facilitate or understand which is the information board which we are providing and how this information is represented in this slide. For instance, this is an aerial picture taken at 60 feet above ground level from Sugar Hills. And where do you get it? With these white spots, which is the ground-level elevation. So here will be 488 feet. In this state will be 472. And the proximity location of Sico Way will be 496 feet. One point that we want to remark is that all these elevations, especially here when it's approximately the Sico Way location, is not including the height of the trees. So when we compare the elevations and we compare this 488 versus 496, what we have to keep in mind is that on top of this 496, there will be the perimeter of trees, it will have an additional 40, 50, or 60 feet. So this 488 versus this 496 is incorrect because on top of this 496, there will be the existing trees, which of course will expose view from this similar elevation. This is one of the things that we want to mention. This has been marked in all the slides. This in other slides, also from Sugar Hills Department, it is taken approximately at 35, 35 feet above ground level. And we are marking as well the different elevations at this point versus the location of Sico Way Solar Farm. Again, when compared this 497 to this 496, we have to keep in mind that this 496 is not including the elevation of the trees. The trees will be on top of this 496 feet.
So please pardon. So 496 is the ground elevation or is it?
The ground-level elevation.
Okay.
The ground-level elevation.
Not the height of the panels themselves. Thank you.
If the board wants to see some specific spots, we are more than happy to review it more without one specific spot. If not, we'll take only one sample for each of the streets, and this will be to ask some additional questions. We have reviewed Sugar Hills and the Glen Sugar Hills Farm. This is the next street. This is Newbury Drive. The elevation, so Newbury Drive is on the north of Sico Way. This is where this Manchester Avenue, and this Newbury Drive. You can see the height differential elevation, 408 versus the 497, and plus 487 plus the height of the trees. We have reviewed different spots on Newbury Drive. Now we have related Manchester Avenue extension. In this case, this is just between the solar farm. The solar farm will be located approximately here, where you can see 503, 494 feet elevation, and plus a twist, versus the 466 feet on the public road on Manchester Avenue, Avenue, this floor. This is more pictures on Manchester Avenue. We want to remark this location, which is off-world Manchester Avenue. This is spot number 83. This picture is taken approximately at 60 feet elevation from the ground with a tom. And we can see that this house is more elevated at the level, the ground level of the Sico Way Solar Farm. This is approximately 12 feet above the level of the solar farm. But again, this 522 versus this 505 plus the 40, 50, 60 feet of the trees that give us a good shedding in front of this house. I repeat, this will be 552 versus 550, 555, 565 in which I can see the trees. But on the perimeter of the solar farm, we will preserve it to shed this solar farm. This is exactly the same spot, but now at the ground level, you can see that 522 versus the 505, and again, that the solar farm will be well as planned. Now we'll jump to Groove Creek Road. On Groove Creek Road, one of the points that we have been checking is the Angles Farm. This angle farm would be at the farm level at 396 feet versus a 505, 516 feet. Again, plus a twist, that the solar farm. We have taken all the pictures on Groove Creek Road. Some of the houses, and such that the same, same anthropology, we have remarked that in different spots, which are elevation at the house, at the public road, and where will be the location of the solar farm. and where would be the location of the solar farm. Taken some pictures as well, aerial and ground level pictures from Heather Bridge. Heather Bridge is close to Brumby Solar Farm and close to Sico Way Solar Farm. So you will see some of the pictures looking to Sico Way and some of the pictures looking to Brumby Solar Farm. Again, same mythology, we have remarked different spots, which are the ground level elevation versus the ground level elevation approximately in this spot of the Sico Way Solar Farm. The conclusion is that from Heather Bridge, similar to other states, they will not be able to see the solar. This is one of the houses looking to Sico Way Solar Farm. This is one of the houses looking to Sico Way Solar Farm. And these are some houses looking to Brumby Solar Farm, some of the houses looking to Brumby Solar Farm. Again, I think that the information that we have brought in is represented in this and perspective that the board today will digest and you're showing with complete information, which is what explains what is information that we are providing in these documents and how is explained this information. This is Heather Bridge and finally East Road. East Road is one of the most elevated states in the surroundings, clearly with 527, 557, so more elevated than Brumby Solar Farm, more elevated than Sico Way Solar Farm. But we wanted to show the board, not only with our simulations, but also with this picture. This is an aerial picture with a drone looking to these houses. And what we are representing in this slide is the different elevation of the backyard of these houses, plus the different elevation of these trees, of these very well skinned trees. The first impression is that these houses, they don't have long views because they are very well skinned. The second comment is that if we compare the elevation of this house at the patio, 596, versus the elevation of these trees, this elevation is very similar, but again, on top of this 490, I have to consider 40, 50, or 60 feet of trees. So this will be effectively 430, 450, sorry, 530, 550, so this is much more elevated than this house. Similar to these two houses, but the elevation is 511 of 502, but the trees in front of these houses are 516 feet, 516 feet. The ground level, plus again, another 40, 50, or 60 feet in this. Similar in this direction, but houses looking in this direction, they will face some trees which are elevated 534, plus a few. Want to show the board, the pictures taken at the ground level of each of these houses to make understand that these houses are very well skinned in all directions. And similar, the same, the same information. Looking to Sico Way from this house, this house will be located at 538 feet at the entrance of the house. This house has a tennis court, which will be 510, the trees, trees are 535 feet excluding the height of the trees. So this will be effectively 538 versus 535, plus 40, 50, or 60 feet, the height of the trees. Finally, we'll jump into the off leave simulation conditions.
So here we're just simulating off leave conditions with mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees. Looking from Sugar Hill Apartments over to Sico Way Project. Probably see better on a printout, but here's the elevated view from the drone, you can see the project. And then here, we're not representing the houses exactly, we didn't want to infringe on privacy. But you can see, because of the depth elevation and because of the mix of trees, there's no visual impact in off leave conditions. Similarly, this is from Sugar Hill, so the Glen at Sugar Hill, so it's closer to the project. Same, same thought process here, no visual impact. Here's from Newbury Drive, which is pretty close to the project. If you remember the, the actual photos we took, this is off leave, the project is behind, behind this hill, and you can't see the project. This is from Manchester Ave, it's from the actual access road, this is the Flint family. And you can see even at similar, similar height in off leave conditions, you wouldn't be able to see the project. This is off road Manchester Ave, it's that house that was under construction. Same conclusion. And then Brunswick Road, this is from the Engles, Engles Farm here, and you can see there's no visual impact. This is Brunswick Road looking towards the Brunswick Solar Farm, and it's the access road here. And there's no visual impact. These are also Heather Ridge Road. Looking at Sico Way, and then also Heather Ridge, looking at Sico Way, and there's no visual impact. This is East Road from, from one of the homes, they do have a lot of evergreen trees here. And you can see just based on elevation and with the leaf cloud, there's no tree. So we're happy to create a number of simulations from any aerial, but to see.
One final comment, you have one final comment from my side. For the board to take, or for the board to understand the distances, you can consider that the distance from this corner to this corner is approximately 2,000 feet. From this corner to this corner is approximately 2,000 feet. So you may use this as a scale to understand the distances from the houses to the different, to the different, to the different projects. So again, we have tried to represent the board who are requesting us from Heather Bridge, from Sugar Hills, and from this road, we try to be more comprehensive and provide the complete, the complete views from the slide. There are some points that we have checked, for instance, from here, or from here, that there is no visual impact. But if the board considers that they want some simulation from here, from here, they're going from these houses, or they're going from these houses, we are more than happy to provide visual information.
I just have one comment for that. Louis, if you're just going to do this again, it's just kind of hard to distinguish on some of these drawings where the actual solar field is because the panels, if that's this location versus just a plot of.
This here.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying if anybody else is going to look at it, we know where it is because we have the documents, but if somebody was going to look at that, it'd be hard to distinguish if this is the plot, that's the plot, that's, you know what I'm saying, there's not a lot of difference there. In the past, we've been supplied where they, they use the field with the actual color of the panels.
Okay.
So it's going to be a black panel, and my recommendation would be that it should be a black, actually show the solar panels themselves in that color. The board can carry, but it doesn't really stand out, is what I'm just saying. People out here, you got, so this one here, it's kind of hard to distinguish that that's the panels versus this plot here, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, okay, we'll call all of the models, but yeah, okay.
Louis, I have a, I have a, and that would be a perfect slide to stay on. So looking at inside the blue there, how much of that would be, would have treated for the?
Inside the blue, consider 100% will be the trees over inside the blue.
Okay. So that leaves, from that drawing right there, it leaves, there's a lot of trees that are going to be removed, there's going to be removed, very few trees left. So when you're, when you're depicting, you know, there's no visual impact, I don't know if I agree with that because when you remove the trees and replace it with, you know, all of this, you know, the apparatus to, you know, for your, the project, it becomes more visible because you're not from a distance. And the other thing is, is there are other locations that are, that have a higher advantage point. For instance, New Long Road, there's a much higher elevation that we'd be looking down on it. And I agree, I agree with what you're saying that when you're at ground level, you're closer to it, you're not going to see because you're looking up, the only thing you're going to see is the trees and what's existing now, you're not going to see over that. But it's the surrounding areas that these, that our neighbors are going to be, our town residents are going to be looking at different vantage points. And when you remove those trees, they're seeing trees now, when you remove those trees, they're certainly going to be able to see.
Let me put an example, maybe in this of the desk example. Compared to this desk, I'm taller than this desk. What is behind this desk, I cannot see from here. This is an example that I'm trying to do, if this desk are the trees, and this tree will be 40, 50, 60 feet. And I will be installing here modules at 8, 10 feet. Even though I'm taller than this desk, I can't see what is behind this desk.
But, okay, so I appreciate that, but let me ask, what is the highest point on the, the top of the materials? What is the, from ground?
From ground, 10, 13 feet maximum.
Okay, so 15, so if you're talking about, you're talking, I appreciate your, you know, your vision on what the trees are 40, 50 feet. But you also have to take out the fact that this, you know, this material is going to be, let's say it's 15 feet. Right, so it's going to be more visible than just being a ground level. With your, what you were just saying, you're looking across and you're looking down.
Okay.
You're not looking, but you're, you're looking at, you would be able to, you're taller than that, that tritop, you're across from that podium, right? So you're going to be able to see part of that, right? You, you can't see the legs hitting the floors, but you'll be able to see the top, just like you are now.
Correct, this is something, this is what we are trying to show with this motion, that if I was not 6 feet, I was 10 feet, then maybe yes, I would be able to see the bottom of these legs. But when we're talking about, when we're talking about, that, this, this road is 520, 530 versus 500. And we're talking of this distance that is approximately 1,000 feet, this is 2,000, is approximately 4,000, then I cannot see. Talking at least that was 20 feet, 10 feet of the solar modules, then yes, then yes. If I was considering that I was removing all these trees, then obviously yes. But when there is this difference on elevation on the trees, 50, 60, 60 feet, I'm not being conservative, I'm not being aggressive on the height of the trees. This is very useful, height of these trees. And when I'm being aggressive, 13 feet, the tables will be 10 feet elevation. So let's consider 13 feet, or 13 feet, we'll not discuss. Then the combination of distance, the combination of the difference on elevation, not enough, then this is what shows our, our simulations. If the moment was feel more, feels more comfortable, we can produce a cross section. And with this cross section, with a person, at this spot, looking at the direction of the solar farm, will see what his eyes can see. It has still enough to produce this, this cross section.
We got a question for you. And this, these photos and these simulations, we don't show any place where the, the cell, uh, solar panels can be seen. Is it your assertion there's no place that can be seen from?
Our simulation shows that, actually, what we have to do to see the solar modules is to raise the simulation at 60 or 10.
According to you, there's no place to conceive.
No, I said.
So is that what that, I think that's where the confusion part is, Louis. So I'm looking at A5, East Road, it says photo taken at approximately 400 feet AGL. So did you have to go to that height where you believe is the only height that you could see that at? Is that why you went to 400 feet? Because all the pictures are taken at different heights, 60 feet, 400 feet, so I guess that's a question. Are you saying that you don't believe you could see the project until you got to 400 feet AGL?
Maybe not 400 feet, maybe 250, 300 feet, okay, yes. But when we draw, when we draw the, the drone at 60 feet, we couldn't see. 60 feet above these levels, in which any house will be 20, 24 feet maximum. Most of these houses are only one level, so, but again, we want to be conservative, 20, 24 feet, no this one.
Okay, I, no, I was just asking if there was a correlation of the height at the picture was taken. If it was your assertion, like John was saying, is that where you felt the height of the picture was the only location where you could see the actual panel?
If not 400 feet, we can, it's necessary to make a picture at 250, 200, 300.
No, it's okay, I'm just asking.
Louis, in your first slide, where you're showing the, it looks like rectangle and you're using the 2,000 to kind of rank it out. Can you kind of go back to that slide? Right, that one, yeah, thank you. Could you kindly indicate where the posting hill creek is and tell us the distance to the posting hill and that southeast corner?
Posting Hill is kind of rich in a creek. Posting Hill Creek is, is, goes along here.
So the distance from that southeast corner?
There will be one point which is very close in the border of the parcel. There will be some points which is very close to the boundary of the parcel. Again, one thing is the border of the parcel, another thing is I where would you start these standing modules? This distance, I would say that we answer the creek. 200 feet, if this is 2,000, maybe it is one of them, so probably it is 200 feet.
And then what would you approximate for the other parcel?
Again, if this is 2,000 feet, probably it is 200 feet, same.
There is a DEC.
Fire in the head?
Yeah, so that's it, requires a 100 foot buffer.
Louis, can you go over that, you say 200 feet for which project?
So. So it's approximately 200 feet from posting hill creek to the first solar farm.
Correct.
And then.
What particular project was that?
This down is the Sico Way Solar Farm. And then likewise, 225 or so feet from Brunswick Solar Farm.
And is there any change to the topography of the land, are you replacing any impervious property with?
We can just use no grading, so we will have the solar farm with the existing, we won't change, we won't produce changes. We won't change, we won't produce grading.
Is there any interest waiting for members for site visit?
Yeah, I mean.
You'd be interested in that?
Yeah, it'd be cool, for sure, I think it'd be cool, for sure.
So that, um, that would be that something we should notice. The public would need to know the date of that, the time of that, and then, because they would have the opportunity at least to join us, you know, but. Is that the purpose of noticing it and not like the whole board attends a site visit?
I, I, I'm happy to address that.
Okay, happy to hear it.
Sure. Thanks, the open meetings law allows a board to act as, or to go as a group on a site visit. You can't discuss or take action, but you can collect information which you then will discuss when we're back in front of, in a publicly noticed session. Pulled into the public, so I have the committee had a little government opinions on that, I've done it all the time elsewhere and I'm very comfortable that, you know. Uh, I'm not even sure you have to notice it normally would be done in a meeting like this if you picked a date and it's on record from minutes. But it doesn't have to get noticed, that's a public meeting, a newspaper. And then again, you're basically not supposed to be deliberating out of, behind closed doors or out of a field, you're supposed to be gathering information. Taking your notes and discussing those notes when you're back in a, in a session.
Right, one point of clarification. Certainly the board can't deliberate. In this one subject to check that I got asked, Mr. Brennan was well versed in this. Does that prohibit the board members themselves from discussing? The, what they're seeing amongst themselves, is there a prohibition on any discussion concerning the project? If you're simply on a fact finding mission and taking notes?
I'll get you the opinion so we can both refresh our memory on that, I think you can discuss it, but again, I don't think you're supposed to be, you know, you're. You're not supposed to deliberate or take action.
Certainly no action, deliberation on.
But I think if you go, hey, someone sees something, goes, oh, look at this, you can see such and such, I don't think that's, it's not as if you have to. Put something over your mouth and not speak to one another, but normally what people would do is they come back to a meeting, you know, and let's talk about what we all saw. Our collective, you know, thoughts and opinions on the results of the site visit. Uh, but I have, I will email you the link to that, the opinions over there, it's. Been a while since I've looked at it, I've never taken the opinion that you couldn't speak to one another at the, you know, fun stuff hour.
It's been a while since I've looked at that, so, so maybe basis of this discussion. If there's a date that's convenient for the board members, I do concur, maybe there's not a noticed. Public meeting, but there's discussion in the minutes of, there'll be a site visit on a date and we'll confirm the extent to which. Discussions can occur at that site or server, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next regular scheduled meeting is September nineteenth, I can want to, please before then.
I guess my only question is that the one parcel is landlocked. So does that require we have to have permission from other landlords to access their property to access this site?
Since it's landlocked, you are correct, it's available. Our agreement is with the things that will be able to see from this parcel. It is possible to access this parcel from one corridor from National Park, but this is a private corridor. If the river is also, not now, then it's possible to cross, but I would recommend that, yes, if, if you can coordinate with us. We either will cross with the flings or we will either cross from here. This, this one, and this one is guarded by one gentleman, which the name is Tom Sawyer, he's a former police officer. He's the representative of Miss Leslie Hassleton. But, you know, that one owner of this one, and what we have visited the, the one, we have accessed it with Tom Sawyer from this one. So yes, we are creating, we might have, would better to coordinate with the Mr. Tom Sawyer, the access to the saw farm. With the pockets.
Isn't necessarily just the both locations?
Same time.
Right, so would the same apply to the other part?
No, no, I think this is cheap lane, this is a public road. Which is possible to access, there is a sign when this public road converts into private road, but it's possible. I would make you recommend if all the board members came, maybe we leave the cars here and walk or up to you. It will be more convenient to walk uphill or we can, we'll move you up.
So how, how's your schedule? Is there any date or time that's, that's approved?
I mean, you got this for you, so.
Just let me know when you're taking it, then we can, uh. And the time of the day is, you know. Do you want to do it during normal business hours or after hours?
Yeah, I think so, John, we're very flexible with your hours. How about next month, you have? August twenty ninth? August twenty ninth?
I mean, I, I don't know if you're, I, I can do it during the day too, I'm just.
Yeah. Four o'clock, John, or the twenty ninth? Four o'clock, twenty ninth? At least how about August twenty ninth, it's a Monday at four?
Basically, it's okay, yes. Yes, I will put it in my agenda. Meet here and then go to here.
Sure, that's good. Is that okay, we'll be here at the parking lot here and kind of here we have our picture.
Should I bring any drawings or any materials? In the ground or the GPS? When we're busy site, site visiting, we take some gadgets too, because when we are on site, it's quite confusing where we are looking at what.
Certainly, whatever gadgets you think we're working with, Nancy.
And just note off coordinate with Mr. Brennan on the content of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, appreciate it.
Are there any other questions for the advocates? I don't have. Your, your figure.
August twenty ninth, okay.
Right, so September nineteenth. For the discussion.
Do you want to go with the public comment responses to the. Last, the public hearing, you guys haven't been able to do that.
We didn't have a public hearing, I'm not sure.
I'm talking about North Troy Silver.
Do you want to do that now, is that your song?
Oh, I don't know, I was just, that was handed out to you guys, it's up to you if you want to take that on now or not.
Does the board, is there a way to review the public hearing comments or not for you or?
Well, I think that was, if Mike can suggest, that was handed out tonight to the board members. How do we give them the opportunity to review them and then if there's any questions, certainly that, it would follow up that.
Can I send something out about the review of questions or?
Uh, we have your explanation, right, yeah.
I mean, for North Troy's more farming, there was a July second public hearing. We produced documentation, trying to reply to different questions from the board, especially these questions from the, from the board, so. If the board wants to review North Troy's on public hearing, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
So we'll come with that after seventeen, please, well then. Good night, please.
No sweat, I'll take care of it.
How was yours?
All right, so our, our next item is a new business. And that's going to be a one twelve in Chesapeake extension, property owner is Richard Hulson, applicant representing Derek Green. So welcome, here, if you have the full time.
Yeah, yeah. My name is actually Nick, it's Massey, I'm representing DDL, Derek, he's up on vacation this week, so.
Last, spelling your last name, Nick?
T O M A S I. Good to go.
Good to go, thank you.
So, um, we're here tonight to see the variance on the building height, um, we understand the maximum. Is thirty feet in this area, uh, the project we're proposing is a two-story, twenty-four thousand square foot building. Um, the first floor is going to be housed by a state gastroenterology endoscopy center. Second floor is in metal office space. So our floor-to-floor heights are about fourteen feet. You open the primary roof structure of twenty-eight feet, which is below the, you know, the zoning requirement. But because of the architecture we're trying to achieve, we're proposing a typical parapet along the front of the building at thirty-one feet. And then this bump-up feature you can see here that brings up to thirty-six feet, sloping back to thirty-five feet. And the reason behind that is kind of twofold, one, from an architectural perspective, just to give some interest to the, the primary facade, have a, you know, continuous, continuous flat line. Um, having that step feature is something the architect would like to achieve. And secondarily to that, because this is an endoscopy center, a pretty large rooftop equipment. Uh, the rooftop unit serving the ground floor will be somewhere in the neighborhood of nine feet with the curb. Um, so we are utilizing this primary parapet of about three feet. Plus strategically placing a unit on the roof so that upper bump-up helps to shield, uh, the deal of the equipment on the roof. So those are the two driving factors.
It's view and noise, it's view and noise.
Yep, yep.
We're going to start, what'd you say?
It's view and noise, the RTUs are not quiet.
And this, um, this view of these were submitted with the last planning board submission, but we did detailed elevations. From each perspective, so this is the primary elevation we'd be looking at that, that really exceeds the, the zone height.
Would that be the same rendering with the?
This may be relevant to show too. On the site plan, just to. Give everybody some perspective. So if you come up McChesney Ave here, so you turn off, you know, who's experience out here, you take a right on McChesney. As you come up the building here, the building is set here with a primary elevation kind of facing, uh, what you'd really see coming up McChesney. So that main bump-up is here and then that primary elevated parapet comes this whole elevation. So we're trying to kind of essentially locate that larger unit to, to shield, uh, shield that deal.
So if you were to superimpose the unit in that other picture, how much of it would you see?
Uh, so we actually did some line of study, um, studies of the architect, it didn't really have no, no, from, from road elevation. Which was the, you know, the overall intent.
What is in front of the building?
So this is your, um, there's a lot of layers on here, but this is your primary parking field, what you're seeing here is underground storage detention, so kind of starting to be off a little bit. And then you've got this private drive along the back that goes up to the apartments that are up, you know, there are the Tri-City, that's all apartments.
Excuse me, uh, to your work, back entrance, you're going to the market, are you capable?
Oh, are you that?
Yeah, yeah, so the emergent fair is in the plaza that's, um, you know, essentially right down, down here. So this, um, this is public, then this turns all private coming up to the apartments, maybe this is a public road. Going to the back of the plaza.
Are you going to have your own entrance or is that shared with that road as well?
Nope, so we have our own entrance right off of McChesney, right here.
Okay.
John, can you speak as, uh, like to represent the firefighters? Is this an issue with the height?
I mean, my department, we have a seventy-foot aerial tower, so. I mean, I don't have to, I'm sure the chief has been provided the actual site plan. And he usually review it, go back to the planning board. But from what I've seen, and I've actually helped them a little bit with some of the site reviews, considering that there's a roadway all around the building. Other than fire protection items and stuff that I don't see here, but height-wise, I don't see an issue with it, considering the size of the apparatus that we have in our department. But we would have to get an official, you know, the usual planning board request written comment back from the department.
That was actually one of the challenges, we were kind of committing a, an earlier version, this building had it, um, actually turned the other direction. But in order to get that whole race track around the back of the building, we rotated the building to position it where it is today. Which did result in a, which promoted the site, but pretty cut, that we have to do here where we're going to get into some, you know, cost to be able to achieve that. But positioning the building here, kind of taking those extra efforts to get access around the whole back of the building.
We appreciate that.
That's helpful.
Yep.
You've done some test holes back there, is that something you're going to be able to pull with a, uh, the shales running right?
Yep, so I think we can rip through the rock there, there's a certain depth, um, the median area of rock is basically right here that we run into, but. We were fairly strategic on the finished floor, we selected, did a few cut, though analysis, analyses to make that work. And it is the rock that we possibly can.
Does this diagram show the bank parking? And if not, where would that be?
I would have to lean on Greg on that, I think that's what trade manning is here.
Yeah, the bank parking is. And here, and I'm going to start. Twenty-seven stays if we bank. We really don't, we really don't count for you, so it's, uh, we needed, uh, I believe. Hundred and thirty-five, we have a hundred and fifteen, so we banked twenty-seven, so we have essentially available for a hundred and thirty.
These are, this is a medical office, it's not going to be an emergent care?
So, the first care is an endoscopy center, so basically GI procedures. So, that'll be the O H review, portable 28 kind of space. And then the second floor is straight medical office space. So, it'll be a, right now, orthopedic tenant, it looks like, at the, about 3,000 square feet for a future medical office expansion.
So, yeah, when I go back, I may go there.
What, do you have an endoscopy or whatever?
I'll go to the second floor. Second floor. Because then I'm going to carry it back, you gotta go there.
Well, that's it, or, you know.
So, this application looks at any questions?
Yeah, I have.
I'm sorry, can I?
This map shows the 60 Avenue, but it doesn't show the location where on the Chesapeake Avenue. Now, you just explained it. When I looked at it when I first got it, I couldn't tell where this was on the Chesapeake Avenue.
Site located.
Yeah, so it's basically directly behind the plaza that houses the emergency care.
I understand that now, but I mean, when I looked at it, there's no way for me to tell where this was located on the Chesapeake Avenue.
Okay.
It's almost right behind the market 32, correct?
Yes. Right behind that plaza, so.
It's the bay. The bay the lot have, have to already turn you into the plaza back way, and that bay the lot just have to.
So, I guess if there's an update to the drawing, maybe you could put a site locator? That might just show the site in conjunction with the intersection of Seven and McChesney.
That's usually, I'm a massive, there's a site locator on it.
Okay.
This didn't have it. I figured out where it was, that the site plan's had it.
And I think there's actually a monument sign.
Yeah, we see that right by the entrance.
Right by the entrance for the apartments, I believe it is.
That's a good question. Where are you planning on putting your signage?
There is a monument sign on the plaza.
So, our entrance.
Right off the entrance.
See, I think it's a 15-foot setback, we need to put a sign.
So, the existing monument sign I was referencing would be, you know, up in here. Or, I suppose it would be our new metric.
Let's hope you don't need the bank spots because you'll be doing more ripping of that stone.
So, how well if the front of the building is a higher elevation to shield the equipment that's housed on the roof and for some noise mitigation? Actually, is the back part of the, that must be like the side, the back and the side is closer to the apartment complex?
So, yeah, but there is a, there'd be a large tree buffer behind the building, so the grains go up pretty substantially into the back of the parcel. So, this is roughly a four-acre site. We're only developing really three-quarters of it, if you said, correct?
Yes.
So, that whole back portion is all trees.
All trees.
Right, so you're not going to remove any of that trees that are back there?
Only where you see the raised, you know, you just started correctly.
We want to touch as little as we possibly can up here. For general thought. It's kind of like, there's quite a rock outcropping there, is why I say that. And that was actually a topic of discussion, how much we could develop on this site, or the reasoning that went in fully developing 24,000 square feet on a site that would, on paper, be capable of doing, you know, 40,000 square feet.
Is that what you're doing, the underground water retention?
Yes, that's one of the reasons.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
Did everyone receive the north coast overpart project? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. You did not?
Could you check the roof to make the?
I don't have one.
Can I get further questions?
Right, one of the things the board should be aware of is the planning board, there is a site plan application pending before the planning board for the project. The planning board did send out a secret lead agency formation notice. There are some state agencies involved. Obviously, the zoning board is now involved for the variance. We're in that 30-day period in which the agencies can respond. It was sent to this board. The planning board does desire to act as lead agency for the environmental impact review. If this board has no objection, that can be noted in the minutes and be your determination.
Did they anticipate any other requests for zoning regards to, since they mentioned the reserved parking or the signage?
No, actually, the, we looked at the zoning law, and the zoning law in Brunswick does provide for banked parking, and that's going to be reviewed by the planning board. And at this point, based on review of the building department, no other variance is required. I don't know that a sign, particular sign application been submitted, but if that does come in and needs any kind of variance, that'll be done, of course.
Before I heard it, the planning board, meaning that the height, the lights are fifteen feet, that the park is not.
That's fifteen feet, which means the.
That's our standard.
And the sign would come down along, there will be a monument sign and then the building
sign.
Right, the minutes are just going to note that the zoning board has no objection to the planning board serving as lead agency. And I'll just note procedurally, the board should be aware, there was also discussion about coordinating with the two boards. At least the planning board's opinion that both the site plan and the height variance can proceed on dual tracks. They don't view the need to have a joint public hearing, so this board can move forward in the ordinary course to hold its own public hearing. It would not be able to act on the variance application until secret's been determined by the planning board, but you can proceed to consider your public hearing.
Yeah, so I think it's complete for a public hearing, which we need again September 19th. Very Monday in September.
Okay.
For a public hearing, six o'clock.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any other questions between now and then, please sign off to John.
I have a hot line to jump.
Okay, good. Who doesn't?
I need to change my notebook.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll get with you after.
I know the homeowner is where the, we can't, yeah, he's a fire, a firehouse.
I understand, so there was a home there.
Yeah. You know, they were probably with Troy House.
Oh, really?
Many, many years ago, back in the days.
Didn't they just demo the house?
Yeah.
Huge.
Next up, we have 32.
You guys didn't get to review this, I just dropped it off in front of you this morning or this meeting. We didn't have a chance to get it out on Friday.
Would you like to title the adaptive project? Sure. So, we have a garage on the property, and what the variance is for is adding a couple things to the backside of the garage. One of the things that we wanted to add was a lean-to, so an extended roof to allow for parking like recreational vehicles, particularly a boat right now. We would like to park under there to protect that from the weather, as well as to get it off the main part of the yard and hide it from the neighbors having to see that in here. The other thing that we wanted to add was a deck to the other, almost half of the garage, the backside of the garage, for personal reasons to be able to have family over and have some space where we can entertain family.
And the variance was that being requested?
Yes.
So, it looked like there are two of them.
This is, I guess I'll pick up on this. And I don't have the narrative portion. John, if I could borrow, wait a second. We had, uh... This has to go back in a little history. In July, we had these folks come up in front of us for a variance for size and height. Two variances granted. And if everybody wants to take a look at this page here, the, the initial variance of 1920 was the building footprint, and then what we calculated was a loft area internal to the building and had a total square footage of 2940. But you can see by the pictures on the backside of this that it's not a loft, it's a full second story. So, I thought we would take and right that wrong by changing that number to actually 2940. And when you do that, you come up with the total under the August 15, 22 to 4,720 square feet, when you add the 16 by 25 deck and the 16 by 30 lean-to. So, for a, for a total of 4,720, where you would have 1,500 normally, but we already had approved 2940. So, it would be the difference between 2940 and 4,720, which ends up being 900 square foot. The 900 missed initially in the 800 and 900 square foot, so we're looking at 17 feet for, for a variance from the 2940. I spoke with Andy on this, and we are kind of confused and have to look at the record to see whether we only agreed with a loft along one side. That's what seems to, we seem to remember. And whether a second floor was approved. You'll also see the plans towards the back of the package. And those plans too, they show an elevation, a cutaway section elevation shows the loft that was on the front section. And, but then, as you see, when you go through where it says on the second floor, it does say floor joists, two by 10, 16 OC, center for the floor joists. Is this what we did, because we wanted to work on the early? Exactly, yes. Yeah, but when you see this note, it does show them there. And this was the print that I approved.
So, what are you saying?
Well, if I, I could add, one of the things that needs to be done here is to review the prior record. There was action previously by zoning board for a variance. John, you're correct, there was discussion about a height, additional height for work on an RV. That record does need to be reviewed to determine the extent of the variance granted. If what is currently being built exceeds that variance, there's a compliance issue that Chuck will need to address through the building department code enforcement. Work had been commenced on either the deck or the lean-to area. Stop work order has been issued in conjunction with that work. So, there does need to be compliance on the record to determine, again, the extent of the prior variance granted with currently being constructed, is there a compliance issue with the second floor? Our zoning law does allow, when a stop work order has been issued, if that stop work order sought to be appealed and a variance requested from the board, that would be proper. At this point, we need to determine whether there is a code compliance issue with respect to the second floor. So, that's something that the building department does still need to review to make sure that the record is complete on this. Relevant information in terms of any potential comment at a public hearing concerning compliance. So, certainly some further review of the record needs to be handled by the board.
Well said.
So, that, does that mean this application is complete?
My opinion is yes.
Yeah. Are you kidding me, all this paper I generated and we're still incomplete? And then just another thing, John, is, did we ever get confirmation on how far you are on that setback on your east side?
On the east side, that is the, to the row? East side. Oh, yeah. I think it's 17 feet.
Yeah, because I took a look at it, and that's these two pages here. And I've got the yellow indicator here, and I'm coming up with seven.
Seven?
Yeah, I mean, it, these overlays, sometimes they're not accurate.
We had survey done at the site.
Yeah.
And I literally cleared the lot, so we had run a string from one corner to the other, and we went after that site with that string. I think the minimum was 15, but we played safe by always 17.
Went another 17, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that, but it doesn't look it. Could you, you be able to set the string up again, you think? You still get your pins there?
It's been a few years, it's a lot of dummy.
Oh, because you got to go on up to the St. Mary's property line to catch it.
Yes, along the way to the cemetery. Took me a few years to clean the lot, it was a very dense zone, you know, vines and things. But our neighbor, who also had that survey done, after we did, she was comfortable with that, with the line that we were working there.
But that's a, that was another question I had, because you'll see in the, on your package, the very last page, you have it right here, Patricia, the highlighted section, that's what's saying 17.
Who wrote that in there?
I don't know, somebody does French sevens. Mine through?
Oh.
That's so I could get. And so, I couldn't under, I couldn't make that out of whether that was a seven with two indicators showing inside dimension or 17. But that, and so that's why I took a look at it, and I came, like I say, on the Google Earth image, I took.
And what's the site?
Should be 15.
15, 15.
Yeah, ignore 25. Would you be able to get a, a survey or be able to do a foundational location on that?
Give me the first variance, there was a bigger map that shows the, we have that we, that we, that you're able to see it more clearly.
Yeah, we're going to be pulling everything out on this, so I'll find that big map.
All right. So, unfortunately, it's incomplete right now, so unable to schedule a public hearing like we did with the previous two, if that we saw. And we'll wait until the building department collects that information. And then in regards to distributing that to the board members, is that something that could be done in the interim, or is that something that could be done next time we meet on the set for the 19th?
As soon as I get the information, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then how is the preparation made that it's completed that time?
First order of business will be if Chuck reviews the record, if there is any compliance... First order of business would be if Chuck reviews the record, if there is any compliance issue, that'll be a building department potential enforcement matter, there was one stop work order issued, but that's, the building department will need to review the record, they need simply have an application dealing with that issue, if there is a second stop work order issued, that is likewise able to be appealed from the board, and that, that's your September nineteenth meeting, while that happens in the interim, then it can review.
So, did, did you say that something had to be reviewed of the second floor that's in the building already?
We have to like, we have to take a look at what the zoning board stated, and see if the, you know, if it was a loft only.
The, the issue is, I know there was a request for a second floor construction.
But it was for storage.
It, well, John is correct, there was a lot of discussion about the height needed to get the RV in to be able to work on it, and the question is, was that the full extent of the building, or was it only partial area of the building to get the RV in? According to the building department, it would appear that there's a full second story being built, not just the loft, so that, that, if there's a full second story, we have to determine based on ZBA record and the extent of the variance granted, whether that's in compliance or like beyond the board granted.
Because the copy, yeah, the copy of this that everybody has was the very first request, very first variance, the upper section of that, and then I did an addendum, you know, titled eight fifteen update, that showed those changes.
May I offer an explanation? I have to, um, through this a little better. So the picture that Chuck asked, the corner one, that was an upturn, how to say this, we have a lot, which is, according to the plan, the lot was up there, but the little picture where he showed the little corner area, there's an upturn, because we, as we were framing it, because it's a sixteen-floor, height sixty-five, there's a lot of challenge giving the two-by-ten up that height, so we thought, well, because of far right corner of the building, where the bathroom would be, we don't need a sixteen-foot height ceiling, because we're not putting an outfield over there, so we decided that by putting in that little area platform, it helps us get material onto the area, and then up, up to the, you know, the floor for the lot, it was a lot safer way to work than try to get two-by, you know, two-by-ten to a drop.
And that to get review, but I thought maybe after top of, and why that?
Is this almost like a scaffolding almost?
No.
But it was more of a.
Your next set of steps up to that.
Yes.
It's up to the attic, which is a full floor.
Yes, the, the one side, the taller side of the building, it just goes that length.
You lose, you know, effectively, what the, you know, what the building, you know, what the building code states as a, you know, usable area, you've got to go up forefront to, for usable area.
That, that helps us safety-wise, you know, slice construction and other things.
Building the stairs to be able to have a pocket-sized stair, you might want to be on the way.
So I've got, got some stuff to review, and we'll do it, and I'll be getting back to you, the best number for you, Von.
Five-one-zero-three-seven-eight, oh-six-five-four.
Okay, so that's you there. Got it.
Thank you very much.
Take your page. Well, I, I put it down, presuming Chuck gets that information out before the meeting, you can determine, complete this, and then potentially a public hearing.
Okay.
What do you guys remember from this?
I thought that only one half of the building was supposed to be lofted.
Yes.
The side over the RV was supposed to be completely open to the roof. That's what I remember.
Because he wanted to be able to pull his old airstream in and be able to lift the top right up off it, and he needed to roam.
Yep. Yeah, and that, and this was the reason that I.
It's our collection.
Yeah. And that's why I had calculated the loft area to be that, that section, and that's how I came up with twenty-nine forty, but now, with the full second story, you've got to recalculate the square foot area, so.
There's no loft at all.
You might be able to call that one there, yeah.
It looks to me, the way that things are framed out and everything, wouldn't they go in here?
It's bathroom. And the, the bathroom's in the back, and you have stairs up to this loft there, intermediary length and that.
Subject to further building department investigation.
Because it was going to be, that little, that little section of that loft was going to be her area for yoga.
Oh, I never heard that.
Yes.
That was storage.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, was I was going back looking at my notes.
It's supposed to be for storage.
This is the original plan here?
Yes, and when you look at that side view, you have a loft.
But what, what this is reflective of this, you can learn on the later.
Right, yeah, and then that's the, the reason I, I mean, I normally don't submit plans to you guys, but I, I was the reviewer on this, and when you get to the third page, you, you look at the third page, it says in writing, two-by-twelve rafters, two-by-ten ceiling joists, sixteen OC, and it shows that in that other block area. So I'm wondering if that's something that I, I missed, having, you know, having the mindset of that it was going to be a loft.
They were only a thirty for a thousand square feet.
That's what I got up there.
Yeah.
It's got to be ceiling joists, and that's fine, but it's not gorgeous. You want to put G-Rock up there, that's fine, but.
Two-by-ten. Two-by-ten's a little high for ceiling joists.
Are there any other questions or objections that we should discuss before adjournment? I'm going to make an open that we are going to see in the second. I'm subjecting, please, if you have one favor.
All right.